Now, open the Estacada City Council Workshop on the Marijuana Dispensary Code Development. And we have Peter Watts here, which is our attorney, going to help us navigate through this. Melanie, did you want to put forth the plan?
Sure. Can you hear me? Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Tonight, so in back in November, the council discussed, met and discussed, and I think it was in a separate workshop about what the response from the community was. We got quite a lot of feedback from the online survey and the paper survey. And Denise had put that all in kind of a summary format. And so we talked about that. I included the minutes from that workshop in the packet because just to jog our memory. And it seemed like you wanted to, as there was kind of consensus to reduce our regulations to come closer to the state, but maybe not go all the way to what the state allows, but to keep some kind of local control there. And so Peter is here with us tonight, our city attorney, and he has a lot of experience in this. Thankfully for us, not maybe not for him, but and so he is here to, I think, hear what your priorities are, what are we trying to accomplish with this? What, what kind of things, what are we wanting to provide to the community and why are we wanting to do this? And then Peter's going to help us draft the ordinance that will decide, you know, that will explain what the, what the dispensary regulations in Estacada are. So I'm pretty much going to let Peter take it away. He has a lot of great ideas and information, I think, that he can share with you. So that's where we're at. Did you, did it miss anything?
I'm, the good news is every, all my other clients have paid me to learn all this stuff. So you guys still have to, so you're kind of getting the benefit of six years or seven years of experience with this issue. Just by way of background, I represented governments as small as the Harney County Slow and Water Conservation District and as large as Clark County, Washington. And everybody in between. And one of the things that I've learned is that the vision and values of every community are a little bit different. And it's, it's you guys who are kind of charged with understanding those vision and values. And so anything like this, and this is the, this is an issue that's been controversial. Some places I represented, not controversial in others. Whatever the regulations are, what's most important is, is they represent kind of the value, values of the place. And, and that there are things that, that you feel good at about. And then we can craft regulations that kind of meet all those objectives. My first experience, I'm trying to draft something on the recreational side. Because, you know, there was a medicinal side previously was because legislator who was kind of co-chair of the joint committee on marijuana and lineer had reached out to me with some kind of city regulatory things of like, what do you think can work and what can't? And the problem at that point is we just didn't have any data points. I mean, Washington had been legal for two years, but it hadn't been implemented for two years. Colorado around the same thing. So a lot of what we did were kind of guesses, knowing that from the state organ administrative rules, there would be an opportunity to come back once those data points were kind of more clear to revise and craft. And then Representative Lineinger became Judge Lineinger and is now at the Clark County Circuit Court. So we never kind of did that revisit. But this past summer, I was asked by some other people, including Matt Molidus, who was an OLCC board member and the one that's kind of been tasked with cannabis is what it's called now, I guess. With that, and, and he asked me if I would kind of look through and look at hit what worked and what hadn't and what we'd gone right and what we hadn't. And he had some, he had some strong thoughts, but kind of wanted me to do that independently. And I told him I, I would. One of the things I didn't understand at the time was that between the Oregon Revenue Code 162 and what's called IRS Section 2A is that people that sell cannabis in stores cannot deduct any of their ordinary necessary business expenses. So they're able to deduct the cost of the goods sold. So what they pay the, what they, what they purchase the, the cannabis for. But as far as their rent, their employee costs, even their electricity, any of those things, none of that's deductible. So it almost looks like a, a, an income tax on your net versus gross. Then the other thing is that there's essentially a 20% sales tax statewide. So there, there's a 17% that the state gets that traditionally has been given back to the cities, but now is being set aside for rehabilitation as a result of, I think it was, well, it was, it was the initiative that decriminalized possession of certain amounts of drugs and then wanted to create opportunities for rehabilitation. So the, the funds that normally would have flowed to cities under that no longer do. Different cities that I represented took very different approaches and none of us knew what, what would kind of work the best. Dundee really only wanted one dispensary for the city and that ended up being Chalice. And that is outside of Ontario, my understanding, one of the most lucrative places in Oregon, just because of the surrounding cities don't have, it's not legal. And, and their code was written essentially so there would only be one in the city. And so if you look at like City of Portland versus the City of Beaverton, Beaverton limited based on population, Portland really opened it up. That the end result has been, I think, on a per capita basis, what I've seen is that having less stores ends up generating higher taxes for the city. Because if there are a lot of stores, and that's the case in some cities I represent, including Scappus, the way that they compete then is on price. So if you, if you've driven through a place and you see like advertisements for $1 pre-rolls, that's essentially because the amount of competition has made it so. So, so that in order to get the customers, it's, it's a lower price, which then kind of results in lower profitability for the stores, lower tax for, for the cities as well as the state. The, the other thing that, that came as a bit of a surprise is that I think a lot of stores didn't understand that they couldn't deduct some of these expenses. And so when the state has gone into audit, there are very few that necessarily have come out of an audit without a lot of substantial kind of revisions and owed money. And, and if you look at the testimony of people that have kind of critiqued our system in Oregon and our tax system in Oregon, that's what they'll say is that, you know, they owe hundreds of thousands of dollars in back taxes because A, it's really, unless you control all elements of supply chain is very hard to be profitable in cannabis, particularly with the illegal grows in Southern Oregon that where they'll rent land for hemp. It won't be hemp that they're growing and then it's like black market, which drives down the price of the people that are trying to do it right. So it is a really challenging atmosphere. I had thought maybe that this session, that they would revisit some of the regulations and revise them. And I think that the consensus was there just wasn't enough time in the short set, session for people to really understand the issues and to fix some of these problems. At the same time, the federal government's looking at this, actually had a conversation last week with Tim Leahy, who works for Ron Wyden. And Ron Wyden and Senator Schumer are two of the people that are kind of leading those federal efforts. And we don't know exactly what that will look like. They're doing their due diligence at this time, trying to figure out what works and what doesn't. And whether to do something that looks more like a alcohol distribution, where you would have people, you would have the three points that aren't necessarily integrated. So you'd have the people that are growing it, you'd have the people that are distributing it, and you would have the people that are selling it. And you wouldn't have someone that was integrated into all three, whether it's going to look like that or whether it's going to look something more like a craft brewery where they're making it onsite and they're selling it onsite. And they're also selling it through distribution channels. So there's a lot we know, a lot we don't know. My advice to staff, because I was like, well, I don't know what the right answer for Estacada is because every city's different. And they're like, well, what, if you were to do it, what would you do? And so what I, my view is that there are benefits and burdens associated with anything, including this. Definite benefits and burdens. And it is always easier to provide more regulation and more structure upfront and then loosen that over time based as a community gets kind of used to something and becomes more familiar with the benefits and the burdens. Because that tends to take a lot of fear out of it. So what I, given what I've learned in Dundee and King City and in a bunch of other places, as well as looking at the state program, what I suggested is that we could make it not an outright use, but a conditional use in multiple zones, not in a, not in a single family residential zone, but, but in the downtown business zone. My recommendation would be that we start it small. So like a, we could tie it to the number of OLCC liquor stores or one, whichever's less or whichever's more. And, and the reason that I came up with that is there may be an initiative in November that would make it so that hard alcohols sold in stores instead of in the OLCC liquor stores. And if that's the case, there might not be anymore. And then we would still want to make sure that there was at least one. Understanding that we can always expand it. But if you, we start with a approach that, well, I saw in Scott Poo's, they ended up with five or six. And then, once you have, if you later then make something less regulated, the ones that are existing are pre-existing non-conforming use. So it's just a lot easier to start small and to expand it out over time if that works. And then that also makes it so that people are able to better charge maybe something that allows them to make a profit versus having to compete just strictly on price, which kind of in some respects seems like a race, race to the bottom. So if, if I were to, you know, be, if, if I were to draft it based on kind of my own experience, those are the kind of things that, that I would be looking at. Yeah, go ahead.
Sure.
Yeah, I don't, I don't mean to interrupt you, but I, before you get too far, I want to just ask, is it allowed to have marijuana retailing as an outright use while also at the same time limiting how many are present? Is that allowable to have an outright use while still limiting the number?
Yeah, we certainly could do that. The reason that, the reason I'd suggest it as a conditional use is because making a conditional use a lot, would allow you to, one of my other ideas would, would be to say, okay, we're, we're going to make, we're going to have this as a conditional use and ask for proposals. So we would want a proposal of, you know, there could be, and there could be clear and objective criteria about which proposal to pick. And maybe people wouldn't want signage, like neon signage or something like that. And so the proposals could reflect all those things. And it's possible then that you could look at these proposals and what they wanted to do and, and where they were interested in putting it and say, none of these feel quite right. And so we're just not going to, at this point, we're going to pull back. And it's possible the community could look at the proposals too and say, you know, we, we have some ideas, but this isn't it. If we make it an outright allowable use, then it really is whoever gets their application in the, in the door first versus maybe the application that's the best fit for the community. And we could build criteria and including, you, you know, if someone had previously done business in the community or adjacent, that might be worth 10 points. We could do, you know, the number of total licenses they own. Because what, one of the other things we've seen is that some of the larger companies haven't had the same tax issues as some of the smaller ones. So those are sort of criteria that we could build and then you guys could review in order to make it so it's the highest scoring versus just first in the door.
So one of the questions I have is, obviously, one of the biggest contentions has been about having this in our downtown main core area. So having it under conditional use, or is there any way to have restrictions on that? So while it may be a few blocks off or somewhere else, we can't have it in our downtown, like main streets and things like that. Is that something we can write into the code or would that be?
Yeah, that's what I did for Dundee. You know, Dundee has a, like you guys, it has a compact downtown. And what we said is that it couldn't be within a certain number of yards of a school. And there were some other things we put in there. And so it kind of prescribed the location and it put the location kind of where they wanted it. And it, that worked out really well. So we can get really creative with the code. The key is the conditional use, because that gives us kind of the ultimate discretion of then, if something comes in and you guys are like, wait a second. You know, we thought we had this down and, and this is it. What we wanted to say no versus outright used, you know, we're stuck if they meet, if somebody meets standards.
Is there an appeals process for someone meeting certain criteria with a conditional use and it's still not being approved? Can they appeal that decision?
They could appeal a planning decision to the city council.
Okay.
If this, we'd probably be doing it at a staff level and making a recommendation. And again, the idea is to maximize the good and to limit the kind of more problematic things. You've probably seen articles, it's mainly the City of Portland. But there have been some armed, kind of some violent armed robberies that have occurred. And I do not anticipate that being a problem here at all. I also think, you know, based on what I learned, that you guys would get good tax revenue here because it's adjacent to the Mount Hood National Forest, it's adjacent to campsites. Sandy doesn't have one, as far as I know. There are other areas nearby that don't have one and, and much like Dundee, there isn't a lot in proximity. That's true here too. I mean, same thing with King City, King City, it's legal, Lake, as we go, Westland, Walton, it's not. So that store gets a lot of traffic, a lot of revenue.
Thank you, Mayor. So just to clarify, you keep, we keep hearing about this tax revenue that comes out, we're capped at 3%, correct? So on a $500,000 a year annual net revenue, that would probably put us at what, $15,000 a year in, in tax revenue off of that? Yeah. And in the overall scheme of things, that's, that's, that's definitely not that much. And so we keep talking about that, but I want us to make that clear to everyone who's watching this, that 3% in the tax revenue does not make a big impact on our overall budget. So I think the biggest things we should be focusing on is, is community satisfaction. So I think that's going to be the biggest impacting piece here.
So the communities that I've seen have generated hundreds of thousands of dollars. I, I mean, I was stunned. I mean, everybody talks about Ontario, which is really a statistical outlier, because it's both the only one on the Idaho border, the only city in Malheur County where it's legal, and they did 100 million. But I, I don't, I don't necessarily think that three to five million is, is outside of the possibility for, for you guys. I mean, I, again, I, one of the many things that I was wrong about was how demand and profitability. That's another reason that it's really important to have a responsible owner, because in a cash business, it's very hard to track. And so, you know, something would be careful. It's surprising.
All right. So one question.
Have you noticed anything, sorry, have you noticed anything obvious from the, how they've, these cities have spent their revenue, if you will? Like, have you seen major improvements in schools or? You know, they, they make, they generate all this revenue and I always hear about, oh, but the schools. And I look at Portland and I'm like, show me where that's improving Portland schools.
A lot of cities have dedicated it to like health and public safety. And so it's been, it depends. Some of them, it just goes into general revenue. It's kind of however you want to use it. I am not aware of it being used for schools. Portland had, if you look at Portland's ordinance, they had it to, like a certain amount supposed to be used for disadvantaged communities. And that goes to prosper Portland to be allocated. And then there's a certain amount for health. And I can't remember where that goes. But the way, in my opinion, the way I've seen it, where it's been most effective is where people have kind of set it aside and used it as a match for grants. So for something like a tourism grant, you know, Travel Oregon might want a 10% match or Oregon's Mountain Territory might be a match. And if you have just some funds where you can say like, here's that million dollar Travel Oregon grant, we can get our $100,000 without interrupting all the other city functions, without having to decide, does this go to, you know, Main Street projects or does this go to the grant match? So that, that's such, communities have used it that way. I think they've managed to leverage their dollars quite a bit.
So yeah, and that goes right along with the question I was going to ask. So we could use this money, the, you know, if, if it turns out to be a larger sum than the $15,000, you know, if it turns out to be a large sum, we could use this money like to, for our URA grants. Does that, would that be?
The URA grants are usually the, the amounts that are, I mean, URA grants are kind of like gas tax. They're, it's for prescribed uses and it's usually just those funds that are in that urban renewal district. But you could, you could do the same type of grants with this as that. I mean, you could say, you, we can, the URA can provide this. And by the way, we have this other grant program where you could apply for, that would be this.
And, and then if a, say a developer wanted to come in and do a multifamily, you know, multifamily residence, could we use that money? You know, to, you know, a grant towards, you know, helping them get that going, helping them get that established?
Yeah. I mean, you could, you could certainly do that.
And then the last part is, could that money go towards, which I think I've already got the answer. Could that money go towards our, like our wastewater treatment plant that is going to cost us millions and millions of dollars?
I, I mean, I, you know, I, I've seen different communities use it for all sorts of, of things. So unless, unless you guys yourselves decided to restrict it, you have maximum flexibility.
Just backing up here, minute you mentioned conditional use versus, we've answered that's what is stating outright use. What's, what's the difference? Is conditional use, we just set up since prescribed stipulations then?
So when you have an outright use, then if, if they meet the criteria, you have to grant it. You have no flexibility. And, and you know, that can be really good because we want people to have clear and objective criteria and know that if they do X, they get Y. With a conditional use, the downside is less certainty to the person making the proposal, as the upside is more flexibility to the jurisdiction in order to decide whether they want it or not. And so usually where you'll see it, like the City of Milwaukee, you could get a fifth floor for a downtown apartment building. If, and they, they decided for compelling architecture. Now, that's pretty hard to know whether something's compelling this. But those are the sort of things where you can say, so if, if it's not something you want, you can say no. I think is, is the good thing about having a conditional use. The bad news is less certainty for the person applying.
You compared this close to Dundee, I think, earlier. So with that, the story, you helped them get in Dundee and the setup there, what kind of a tax revenue were they bringing in from that so we can get a better idea? I'm just trying to get an idea what we're going to bring in here so we get a reality check.
I think the last that I heard, I think they were between 300 and 500,000. And I don't know if that was, I don't know if that included some money from the state coming back, but they have a relatively small population. The reason I compared you to them is because the area around them, there's not a lot of places where it's legal. So for a store here, what I would anticipate would be, there would be some locals that would be purchasing here. There would probably be some people coming in from Sandy. And then there'd be people that were going camping or in the Mount Hood National Forest. You know, the same people that buy gas here would my, maybe would buy there too.
Um, I just wanted to clarify, one of the reasons I was asking about outright use versus conditional use is because, well, we all just met with the consultants of our housing needs analysis. And one of the recommendations that they've been making is that if you have multifamily units be an outright use versus a conditional use, like, you know, duplexes or triplexes as an outright use, you're more likely going to actually see that type of development because you don't have an additional barrier for those developers to go through. So when we talk about something being a conditional use, we're talking about an additional barrier. And of course, one of the things that we have been learning about as a council over the last year, having this discussion about cannabis regulation, is that there's already several barriers that exist for cannabis, for cannabis retailers to come in, whether it be the fact that it's not zoned for it or the fact that the property has a federal loan out on it. You know, we talked about that being a barrier, that a property has to be owned outright with no federal loans on it in order for someone to actually open a store in that location. So when, when I was asking about the differences between an outright use and a conditional use, I'm just talking about that being an additional barrier for anybody to experience and whether or not we could remove that as a barrier or whether or not that's a necessary barrier for our city. I just really wanted to clarify that because, again, barriers are what we're talking about today. And, and we just need to know which barriers we, we as a city are willing to remove.
And I see Councilor Dunsborough's point as far as barriers. But I think as having a conditional use allows us as a city, because they help quell some of the fear that, that people have here with, is it going to be, we're going to be overrun with it, is it going to be a bunch of people that's going to come in and, you know, bring up what kind of problems is that going to cause for the city? Where's it going to go? That at least allows the city to possibly open it up to the public, how they come and speak on it so that they can feel like they've addressed their fears, their concerns, at the same time as knowing that there is the ability to say no. If someone does have something that doesn't, that, you know, may be questionable or concerning to the rest of the community or to the council, we have the ability to say no to that. I think retaining that ability gives us a chance to, like I said, quell some of that, the over, overly exert fear that they've had in the, in the community about this. And it's, I think it might be a good middle ground for us to consider. So going over the questionnaires that we had during our open house, the online survey and then the paper survey, your experience in other, in other cities, I mean, do they restrict it from, you know, so many yards from a church? From park, from sports fields? And obviously there's going to be, you know, restriction from schools. I mean, that's a.
The most, the most common one is schools.
Yeah.
And because it's really easy to draw that line. So it's really easy to, for people to understand. And a lot of people just don't want to have a conversation with a young child about, you know, what that business is. And so that's why some of the other things that we could, you guys could think about are things like signage. Because if you, there, you can go, I mean, so someone looking for, for cannabis can go online, see where all the stores are, you know. And they don't, and so maybe a community might say, we don't want green neon, you know, cannabis leave signs because we don't, our parents don't want to have that conversation with their kids. You know, I think that there've been, there've been other, other criteria that have limited it, just to make sure that's in certain zones. And, and I think that's perfectly fair too. And again, it's just, um, to, to Joel's point, a lot of people are just really nervous about this and they want to make sure that the fit is the right fit for the community. The fit is the right fit for the community. And so I think the more opportunities that. Certainly, the the jurisdictions I represented have said, you know. We're not gonna do what Portland did and just say, as long as there's not another store within four hundred feet, you can do it. We're gonna really take time and make sure that this is something that everybody understands and that we agree can be an amenity for the city. Versus a burden. Um, those have gone a lot more smoothly than if people think that. It could just turn into kind of the Wild West of cannabis. And where where jurisdictions haven't had those criteria. That makes people, I think, a lot more anxious in my mind. So with any. Any barriers, we want to make sure that they were reasonable in approach and not going to unduly burden everything. But also that the community have a say in this and make sure that it was right sized for them. And it's possible the community come out and say, we want like eight of these, you know, actually, we want them competing on price. I think that's probably very unlikely, but I've been consistently surprised in different jurisdictions about what the reaction's been. So I've learned that you cannot necessarily predict.
Well, it's such a short amount of time. I mean, in a short amount of time, the perception has changed immensely. Then I would say the last five years I've seen them.
Um, I'm I'm supportive of the conditional use idea as well too, um. With the outright use, we're trying to entice apartments to come in. Conditional use, we've got, uh, folks coming to us. Asking if they could establish something in here. So the conditional use seems like it'd be a good fit for us right now. And I'm in support of of trying to craft something from that standpoint.
So the, this is a workshop, so we're not just asking question of Peter. We're we're talking amongst ourselves, correct? Okay. So, um, I, I I know Sean and and Katie probably know from the beginning of this whole thing. I went from being a against this, you know, against having it. To where I'm, I'm really, you know, through conversations that I've held with people and, um. You know, a local, a certain local business, business owner that's, um, really enlightened me on, on, on a lot of this stuff. So. I am completely for this being a conditional use application. I'm I'm completely for that. I would like to. At the very least, remove the church, um, stipulation. But I would like to reduce all the rest of them to the five hundred feet, if that makes sense. Um. I don't like the, you know, the complete one thousand feet from everything and. Never ever getting one of these businesses into Estacada. So, um, I don't see that. I think if we remove, if we remove the. Um, the church aspect, the leaving in the fact that it that it's not gonna be allowed in a residential zone. It's gonna take care of the whole church aspect of it. Um, because the the majority of our churches are in residential zones, except for the churches out. You know, the church out north on the highway, which I don't even think is in city limits. Um, so, um. You know, just, I think it, if we just remove the church aspect because of the current not being allowed in a residential zone. That'll, that'll make a lot of people in town happy, because, um, but then reducing the others. I think that's, that's kind of where I'm at right now, you know, uh, conditional use. Remove the church wording and then reduce to five hundred feet. That's kind of where I'm leaning, but I am completely open to. You know, what anybody else is for. I just kind of want to get, get some, I want to get some movement on this, get some, you know, get some definitives from us. So.
Thank you, Eric. Um, I could compromise down to what Jerry was discussing, as long as we could have some way of. Of keeping them off the main street there, maybe a block or two off our main, main and Broadway or something like that. So we can satisfy those concerns. I I can understand removing the the church one or something, because they are mostly inside of the neighborhoods. And reducing some of the other ones down, but protecting the areas that everybody's been mainly concerned about, about those areas. I mean, I I could find a way to compromise somewhere in the middle there, as long as we can write something in there that does that. What, especially with the con, the conditional use, because if they're trying to put in an area that maybe there is a hole we've opened. And there's a massive community pushback on that or concern. That allows us to say no to it and appease the majority of the community. But if they find a good place that isn't, you know, causing a lot of problems, people are good, admits for the business side of it. Gives us a chance to say yes. So that's just my take on it.
I was just kind of curious, um, what is the benefit of not having it within a thousand? Or I'm sorry, within, uh, five hundred feet of a park? If you want to reduce it down to five hundred, I guess, I'm just asking.
You know, I just. I I really didn't, um, I really don't see there being an issue with it, with it, with the whole park aspect. Um, I just, the majority of the people that I've talked to about this, um, and I've had a lot of conversations since this, this is, you know. Um, I think that open house, that open house was was huge for me as far as eye opening and. Just, uh, ga- gaining knowledge, just from a couple of conversations that I had during that open house and, uh. Um, uh, you know, the majority of the people that I talk to, the parks don't come up. The parks don't come up as as being an issue, but, um. And, you know, the parks, most of the parks in town, you know, in town are in that residential area. Go, go ahead, go ahead. I'm a conversation, no, conversation.
So one of the things that comes to mind is that that bike plaza right there in front of City Hall is considered a park and it is in our Parks Master Plan. So if we left it at five hundred feet and you couldn't have it within five hundred feet of that spot right there, which would essentially kind of take away. The purpose of opening it up to the downtown.
Well, so, uh, uh, as what Joel was saying, you know, keeping it a couple of blocks off the main thoroughfare, that'll take care of that five hundred feet. Right there like that. So if we say, if we say keep it, keeping it a couple of blocks off the main thoroughfare, being being main and Broadway. Um, that's gonna eat up that five hundred feet and this park will not even be a an issue, you know. The one park, the one park that would be an issue, I believe, would be once the, our, uh, riverfront park is opened up. You know, then that kind of, that kind of eats up a lot of the, a lot of the area over here.
Including the strip mall where the CAS is.
Right, correct. Yeah, so that would be my one concern there. The only park, you know, going through, going through all the parks and, you know, in town. That's the one park that really, um, is, once that one is opened up, that I think would be, that would be the only park I think would have, where there would be an issue.
I I guess, um, a question that I would then open up to, I mean, the entire council, we're all having this discussion is. So if you guys are comfortable with removing the church thing, what if we did just remove the church and parks, uh, rule? And we said, you know, open it up to the downtown, but make sure that it is not adjacent within or adjacent to Broadway and Main Street. Um, or within a certain feet of Broadway or Main Street. I probably wouldn't do something as extreme as five hundred feet, just because. Um, five hundred feet really does envelop a very large section of our downtown zone. Um, but, uh, if if we did it that way, would you guys be comfortable with removing the parks thing too? Or maybe even reducing it more than five hundred, you know, um, maybe reducing it to two fifty instead?
Yeah, I have a compromise that might work for what you're looking for, because I think your main concern with the parks is the strip mall over here, correct?
Well, I mean, you've got a glass store in the Casodaro part, in the Casodaro strip mall thing. So you could theoretically have a retail store in that strip mall. And if we have a park right over here, then it would essentially null and void that whole section.
Yeah, I'm saying, that's your concern.
Yeah.
Is it possible to write in the code with the five hundred feet to the parks? Because there's areas, there's other areas that I'd want it from the park, because I don't want, take my daughter to a park and then there's just a store near it. Or something, you know, like if, for example, if it opened up a spot near, let's just say, uh, I don't know if it's within the school distance, but. Up there across from like Wade or something like that, or future parks developed. I don't want to, you know, have to explain that to her or, you know, other kids and things like that. So I I ducked these there, but can we do an exception? For a specific park or location that would allow, everything else falls under there and have a documented exception to that park.
When I think basing it on the, I I thought that was a wrong idea when we designated this whole bike plaza here as a park in the first place. So that, that was just. Anyway.
It it's the parks as they exist today. So, um, let's say you kept the five hundred feet. My understanding is that's not yet a park. So if it became a park, then the location would be the pre-existing non-conformal use. So they could continue to to operate.
If they'd opened up already.
If they had opened up already. So again, it's, it was what's called the goalpost rule. So it's, it's as it exists at the time of the application. And that keeps it, so they put it in application and then if you guys can designate a ton of sub parks, then it just wouldn't matter because. They, it's that that snapshot in time.
But if we leave it as a conditional use, that's all very much up to, uh, opinion essentially. Because I know that when, if you go back and look at public record from January of two thousand and seventeen. The city council originally denied a marijuana retailing license because of the fact that they were planning a park in a specific spot. And they didn't want a marijuana retail spot to be in that spot. Um, and so just even the plan of having a future park there was enough to deny the application back in two thousand and seventeen.
Yeah, so again, I mean, we can craft this however, we can kind of craft this how, however you want it. I mean, if that's the location that you want it to be, we could even say that it's, you know, needs to be. Within X feet of City Hall, but not, I mean, we could, we could get very prescriptive. Uh, the problem with getting very prescriptive is that. You know, then, then it can create it so that the, the owner of that building is then be like, well, I'm the only show in town. So if you want, so suddenly, you know, rent just went up, uh, or, you know, so. Again, I I think that. There's some, there's something that we could come up with that is going to probably be palatable to most people. And kind of crafting those. Regulations kind of be the journey to get there. And then at that point, my guess is there would be a lot of interest. And you would probably get multiple proposals. And you can kind of look at those and and figure out, is there one? Um, that really works for us. And and then it's possible, part of that process, you could say, actually, we, maybe we do want more than one. So again, it's always easy to, more easy to broaden than to to restrict.
So going along the lines of what you were just saying and back to Counselor Lickkey's question just a minute ago. Is it possible to draft an ordinance that says something along the lines of, you can't have it within five hundred feet of a park? Unless it's at this specific tax lot, then we'll allow it.
And let, I mean, unless it's within. A hundred feet of the Casodaro or whatever. I mean, you could.
Oh, okay.
You can, you can. And again, if, when you start getting that restrictive, it kind of to people can kind of look like you're picking winners and losers. And and that can also have, uh, that can create some bad feelings or ill will. Um, so, but really, it's risk, as restrictive as you want it to be or not. My guess, though, is that you probably want some options, because particularly if you have competing, um, proposals.
I was just thinking, uh, a lot of what we had talked about before, or I don't know if it was a general consensus or not, but, but like, uh, uh, Councilor Lickkey had said. The downtown area, okay, um, not on Broadway or Main Street, though. I mean, how, how, how can we craft something that would, that would state that?
We could say it's allowed in the downtown zone, but not within a hundred feet of Broadway or Main. And you'd want to look at a map and say, okay, well, where, and that's what we did in that day, basically, you know, I. We looked at a map and we were like, we didn't want it to be near the elementary school because kids walk to school. We wanted it to be on Highway ninety nine, because we know people heading into wine country, if they were gonna stop, they would stop there. There were already traffic issues. I mean, this was pre bypass, but we didn't want a bunch of traffic going into. Off of ninety nine, um, and and we crafted it in that manner and the result is the chalice that exists there today.
I want to talk to this council, um, about the idea of, instead of within feet of. The idea of adjacent to, and I'm, and I I say it like that because I see opportunity here. And I see that the future for us is increased tourism, because we're opening up to twenty four in May, which is really, really exciting. And that's gonna bring more traffic. And if we have a business like this. More than likely, we're going to have a lot of tourists stop in our downtown zone and get out of their car and walk around. And if we have them getting out of their car and going into a cannabis retailer and the, you know, the main street is a hundred feet that way. They're less likely to then take their foot traffic that this business has just generated from in the downtown core. And they're less likely to then go and extend that tra, that foot traffic to other businesses who can benefit from that foot traffic as well. So for me, I totally see the advantages and the benefits of not having a storefront adjacent to Broadway or Main. But if we keep those businesses so far away from Main and Broadway. We're really losing the opportunity to capitalize on the foot traffic that this business is gonna generate, that I think our downtown businesses could really benefit from. The second thing is the security level of it. I mean, really, with this type of business, they're going to bring in a certain level of security. And I think that our downtown businesses, especially those closest to Broadway and closest to Main, could probably benefit from the increased security. That a business like this is gonna bring to the downtown core. So, I mean, I wonder what everybody's openness level would be. Instead of saying within feet of, but kind of changing that to be not adjacent to or not. You know, no adjacent storefront, something like that. Because if you, like I said, if you reduce it or you view. Keep it a hundred feet, you're losing the opportunity of the traffic.
Yeah, I mean, we, we can, again, we haven't got a lot of flexibility in this. The, the other thing, and and this is anecdotal. Um, but, you know, I've spent a lot of time on tourism issues as well. Anecdotally, people that are in the campsite or what have you come in. And will buy. Cannabis and groceries and gas. And so it's more of a, it's not just people going out. It's the people that are there and then maybe nobody brought whatever, or they got out there and realized they didn't have whatnot. And so they're going to go to a location that offers all of those things. So I think that. I mean, whether that would also involve like a meal in a restaurant, I I don't know, but I think that people. At least anecdotally, want to do one stop and get everything they need. So I I think it, you're right that it could positively impact other businesses.
And and I can see the argument you're making there, uh, but I don't think one hundred feet's gonna make much of a difference. Because like the parking's there or it's downtown, but we have a store right here off of Broadway. That's gonna probably attract most of the people coming through here, because they're gonna want to get the supplies for camping and going up and get their treats and snacks and things. They're gonna be stopping across the way in these get and goes and stuff like that as it is, that that we have this, these same things, the same attractions. That she's referring to, not on Broadway as it is. So if someone's coming through and they want to get beer and cigarettes, they're gonna go to the tackle shopper to get and go. And they're not gonna come downtown to downtown anyway. So that argument can be made either way for anything. So I I don't think that's one to pull the adjacent to and just to disregard the concern of the community for. Because the community has made it so concerned, their, their biggest concern is protecting this downtown and this Main Street. That's one that they've been most concerned about. And by putting something in there, I think we're doing justice to the people, the community that have entrusted us to do so. But still allowing us to open up enough to have a cannabis shop come in. And that, that's what I'm saying, there's so many other options there. We're just basically making sure by doing the hundred feet of, of, or whatever, I like the hundred feet, it's not that far. It opens up a lot of spaces on the back end over here in in downtown. I think a hundred feet is like, that's like a block, right? Roughly. About a, about a block. We figure out what a block is, we can put that, that amount in. The whole point is a block. That, that's, that's a good compromise to what people have been concerned about. So, and it'll allow then the, so the spots to open up. Protect our Main Street, meet those, meet those needs. The park thing meets the needs, everybody bringing it down. The church thing, we have one church downtown, the rest are up, protected by schools and everything else, as you mentioned, or in the residential area. I think that's our best, best thing is reduce to five hundred feet, next the, next the church thing. And, um, keep like a hundred feet or whatever the, a block size is off of Main and Broadway. And I think that's like the best middle ground for everybody on both sides to meet, from what I can see. So.
Um, when I was talking about opportunity earlier, the other opportunity that I see is to help develop an area that has not been developed. Um, and what I'm speaking to is, uh, the Riverfront Commercial, which is the new zone that we developed when we redid our comprehensive map. Um, that is mostly right now the Forest Service building. And it's been sitting on the market for years and there's been no movement on it. And it's been sitting on the market for years and there's been no movement on it. And I think that there is an opportunity for somebody to do something really cool in there. And that it's gonna take people with money or people who think that they can earn money to come in and develop that spot. My question for this council is whether or not they see a value in opening up the riverfront commercial, that basically piece of property. Um, to also allowing the possibility for this to come in and see some potential development in that area.
I wouldn't hold your breath too much on what's happening, what there, there's some rumors flying around, but I wanna leave those to other things, so.
Anybody else?
I, I don't have a problem with allowing it in riverfront commercial.
Cannabis strong feelings, one way or the other on that one.
Yeah. As far as the riverfront, no, um, I'm just, you know, even though it was a small comparatively. Um, you know, you put comparisons to the population of Estacada, I'm still looking at the dispensary placement results. And I know it's a small percentage of people who did vote on this, we can't just throw the baby out with bathwater. And, you know, I'm just looking at what our constituency base has said. So I am for conditional use. Um, I'll agree, I will, I'll meet you on the church thing. But I really wanna keep it away from the Main, Broadway and no neon signs, so.
Right now, Steph, uh, at this point, what, what exactly are you looking for, from us?
I think, I think they've come up with, you've come up with what we're looking for. Um, do you need any more clarification? Pretty much what I have is we wanna, we, we could drop the distance from churches. We could reduce the distance from parks and schools. I can remember what the state regulation is on schools, but we don't think.
Yeah, and all those regulations were related to medical dispensaries.
Oh, okay.
That's what a lot of them are based on.
So we can do what we want with that.
We can figure out how many feet a block is and we can figure out where it would open it up and not, and just take a look at a map. And also maybe look at what properties are for rent or what's for sale to get an idea of where it could actually be. Um, I think then we, we'd wanna, we'd bring back um, an ordinance, you know, creating these amendments. We could then, i- in the event that you do wanna do a conditional use, et cetera. Um, there could be a ton of interest or, or maybe not, but we could come up with some kind of objective criteria in a timeline. So that uh, it would give people a chance to kind of demonstrate their commitment to the community. And how they would do something that was kind of right sized.
I just wanna throw this out there, uh, last thing to throw out there. When I talk about developing areas that we would like to see development, but there is no development, what about the mill, mill area, mixed use area? How does, how does the council feel about opening it up to that particular zone? A big purple blotch above downtown and it's in between the downtown zone. And basically runs behind all these, you know, residential neighborhoods and behind the library and behind Wade Creek Park and stuff. All the way up to what is essentially the industrial park. I'm, I just wanna get everybody's opinion or gauge people's comfort level on that.
Joel, and that's kinda wrap this up pretty quick, so we have a few minutes.
Thank you, Mary. Um, my, my thought is that that's either A, it borders right along a lot of housing areas. And my guess is one day it's gonna be a bunch of housing, so if you kinda open that up, that's my, my restrict housing locations. Or we can put things if we're, don't allow it in residential, and we open it up there, that may, that may reduce the ability to have like, you know, uh. Affordable housing or something like that one day, or something else that could be going in there or another development or something along those lines. If we allow it in there, it's, might block that, so think, but I think we should try to care cautiously in that one, so.
I think, uh, you have a directive, I think you've pretty got a good idea of where we're going with this, Peter, we appreciate everything that you brought to the table. That keeps us in the.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll work on the ordinance and um, we'll be open to, you know, critique of that ordinance when it comes back to you. So hopefully, it's always nice to get it right the first time, saves time and moves forward. But if the, in this case, you know, it might take a couple times to.
And it, it would be possible to set up another workshop so we can all discuss it, when it comes back, so that we're not, you know, blindsided by it right in front of us.
I, I think that's a really prudent approach. I mean, I, I think it's, it's nice to be able to have a conversation, you know, without the pressure of, of making a decision that night. And I mean, we're gonna certainly try and make sure whatever we do reflects what we heard tonight. But um, I, you know, I think that it's just making sure that, to that the public know that you're really taking time with this.
Thank you, Peter. I think I like also the fact that they are considering the conditional use, where it's not gonna be. Um, just like a, a race to see who can get their application in first. But somebody could really craft that and say what the benefit to the community would be and really kind of tell their story and say how. You know, they're, how they expect it to be a benefit, um, and then have that objective criteria. Cause I know it's been a concern for staff, it's like if we get like three or four applications all, all at the same time, or one right after the next. You know, how do you make that fair and equitable to everybody? So um, I think that's a good choice.
It was a great discussion, I'm glad you all came to the table in that discussion. Okay, Jerry, you had some great stuff there, Joel, Charity, y'all spoke up, so I appreciate that, thank you. And I'm gonna wrap this up and we got about five minutes.